It is six o'clock, I call the meeting ordered. We do have a call, but everybody please scan for the flags, Lou.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, approval of agenda.
I make motion to approve the agenda.
A second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it, the agenda passes, alright. Old business, does anybody have anything for old business? No, nothing turned up, so I don't know that I have an update on anything off the top of my head, so. We will move on to mayor comments, I get to do the end of year awards. That's always, yes, first, we have this for Lindsay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for, yeah.
You said your name was Daniel, not Taylor.
Thank you for serving, we appreciate all your hard work and dedication.
Thank you. Yep.
Alright, and then we have volunteer of the year award. This individual has been volunteering around Winlock for a number of years. Maybe kind of flown under the radar a little bit, but has spent plenty of time helping people around Winlock, plenty of time in the museum, and as of late, has put together a program to put a flag all over the city of Winlock during the holidays, in which it makes sense. Is Tommy Thompson here? Hold on Tommy, I'm gonna try to get the plastic out of this thing.
We'll work out, right?
Spoons. Yeah, spoons Tommy, we know you have some good ones on there. Thank you Tommy, thank you for all you do, we really appreciate you.
Yes sir, thanks.
Thank you Tommy.
Alright, I have one more, I know you didn't see this coming, curveball, my last meeting, I'm gonna throw one. This individual, I ended up just deciding needed one, myself. Oftentimes, oftentimes, if you're on council, you end up voting for these things, but you're never awarded one yourself, for obvious reasons, right? We tend not to vote for ourselves. However, it hasn't gone unnoticed that this individual has been volunteering for years, a number of years, has put in countless hours, and never asked for anything, always shows up with a smile, and does everything that is asked, and goes beyond that. And I felt like this individual needed some recognition, and I didn't want it to go unnoticed, and also from having been on council, never get her name on this plaque here, in which it is very well deserved. So Jody, I have one for you as well. We appreciate you.
Thank you Jody, thank you.
For folks that don't know, she spends plenty of time with the seniors in this community, and has done so for a long time, a lot of cooking, it takes a lot to cook all those meals, everybody going around to organize everything, egg day, how long have you been doing egg day?
Uh, eleven years.
Eleven years, yeah. It's tough to volunteer in Winlock that long of a country. We appreciate you Jody, thank you. Alright, council comments.
Well, thank, I'll say thank you for my little prize here, it's been an honor to serve Winlock and work with you guys, and I just really appreciate all of it, being a part of this, and hopefully maybe one day when I'm not so, the house full of kids, maybe I'll try again. So, thank you so much.
I just wanna, I would like to say just thank you to the town for coming together to make your voices heard, even with the tough debates, I appreciate you guys coming out and, you know, sharing what's on your mind, because that's what our council, we need, we need to know, we need to know how you feel about decisions, and like I said, even if it's a disagreement, we need to know. So thank you guys for coming out. I also would like to thank everyone that came to the food main Christmas, Christmas wrapping or donations, is that the right name for it?
The wrapping for donations, Santa cookies and hot chocolate.
It was a good turnout.
Celebration.
Thank you for bringing your kids, and just thanks for, you know, just being a part of the community.
I wanna say Merry Christmas and more Happy Holidays to everyone. And this comes from the heart.
I am not a woman of great means, by any means, it's not about gifts, it's about time to other people, and it's about, and if you can't give your time, if you can't help a neighbor, if you can't hold a door, at least just be kind, just be kind to someone.
I just wanna thank Brandon for your many years of service here. You've done a lot and put a lot along, on the line, you've done a lot for this town, and I wanna thank you.
Appreciate everyone's support, especially you guys and the staff. It's, it's not what we started with, that's for sure, come a long ways. Alright, any other council comments? Alright, we'll move on to reports, finance committee.
Finance committee report.
Were you at the meeting?
I was.
I have an update as far as today's total. So, as of today, when Jill ran the report, we are in the positive, after paying off our loans, we are in a positive of a hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventeen cents. We are in the year very well. So I wanna thank everyone, all the department heads, I mean, it's a complete team effort, I wanna really thank Jill, I mean, she's done amazing. And I wanna thank you for being there on Wednesdays with me, going over all those fun numbers.
It's a headache, but it's worth it, man.
Alright, any questions for Jeremy or Jody? Alright, we will move on to public comments. Agenda items limited to five minutes, please state your name for the record, we have a few people have signed in, Victoria Berenson.
I just have a couple of questions, is ordinance number 1193, is this correct, you're amending the 2025 budget? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, legal services. You had said a while ago that these contracts, all these contracts that were renewing in the, you know, that this was just normal course of business, that we needed to renew them. So I'm wondering why we're renewing this one with buzzard law? Because in the contract we have currently, it says, "It is the intent of the parties to continue this contractual relationship from year to year until terminated." It is not the intent of the parties to execute a new agreement at the end of each term. So I'm, I'm just confused, can, can you explain why we're doing a new agreement when our agreement says we're not doing a new agreement?
The discounted rate that our office charges to all the cities that we represent is two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. This point is gonna be, the purpose of it is to raise the rates. It will stay at two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, which has been for several years. In 2027, it will go to two seventy-five, and 2028, it will go to three hundred. So we've tried to keep them down, but that's, that's the intent of the contract, all other material terms are the same.
Okay, it's, alright, thank you. It's just hard to know what's going on when, you know, you have part of the information, so, thank you.
Alright, Everisto Gomez.
Given the memories to Gomez, just regarding the agenda item on the parking, I wanted to clarify publicly, something I posted on Facebook, that something was distributed in the, what do you call it, the Lewis County News, that accused the council and the mayor of being aggressive, and acting against our church, and pretty much, it was very, very negatively put, and it was incorrect, so I just wanted to clarify that the council and the mayor did not in any way try to get us to have parking tickets or to take away our parking. I found out from Jeremy last time that it was part of the grant, that the street parking on, on the east side had to be removed in order to have that road and sidewalk done, so there were no hard feelings, it was the way it had to be done. So I just wanted to clarify for everyone that we don't have or hold anything against the council, or that they were not responsible in, in the accusations that were in the paper, so. That was mostly what I wanted to say.
Thank you, and thank you for hosting that.
I appreciate that, we appreciate that.
Alright, Tommy Thompson, did you wanna speak, or did you just sign in? Your, your name's on here, you're gonna have to get up and say something.
Come on, tell us a story.
What'd I do?
I'm sure you have something to say.
Oh, I, I thought that was a co-signer for a moment.
It's all good, you don't have to say anything, I'm just gonna relax a little bit.
Well, I will say something, with the, the whole flag project, I couldn't have done that by myself. I've had lots of help. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thanks Tommy.
We have a couple written ones.
Okay, this was submitted via email, Lindsay Saylor. My name is Lindsay Saylor, and I'm a parishioner at the historic Old Sacred Heart Church here in Winlock. I would like to address our parking issues since the road has been updated. But first, wanted to thank you all, hearing our issues regarding this, and as far as I heard from Lu, the last Lu, sorry, the last council meeting, the parishioners from Sacred Heart felt hurt and came away from the meeting knowing that our council would try their best to accommodate our needs. The recent article in the Lewis County News did not reflect that, and although I do enjoy reading that paper from a, for a different perspective, I was pretty disappointed with the narrative there. Thank you, council, for hearing our concerns and being willing to work with us. We are bringing life back to Winlock through our beautiful church, the sacraments offered to us, quiet country folks, and the community dances, shared meals, and Jesus, of course. How, how can we continue to offer these beautiful things to Winlock if the initial hurdle is parking? Although, although our streets are public, some neighbors on the street have yelled at our children and left not-so-pleasant notes on our vehicles. We do not want any problems with our neighbors, and would like to park right in front of the church and free up the curb for their vehicles. Perhaps, I heard perhaps the council was going to make an exception to the no parking rules for Sunday, and I'm super, super grateful for that. I would also ask that you please include evenings in this as well. We are an active church, and we are in the neighborhood multiple times per week. We are also, also made up of families with young children, thank you for considering our request of allowed parking on the streets, evenings on Sundays. And I got a second one, hello, my name is, I don't know how to say it, Tiana?
T I H A N L A?
Yeah.
Tiana.
Tiana, okay. Allies, and I just wanted to, wanted to add my family's support to the street parking issue on Arden Avenue. That will be a topic on tonight's council meeting. My husband and I, along with our two-year-old, just bought a house here in Winlock back in April, and are members of the church on Arden Avenue. Although the new street is so beautiful, it hurt our already small, already smaller, small parking situation. I believe the ask is that we can at least be able to legally park on the street on Sundays, but also every day after 5:00 PM would be great, because we have so many week, weekly evening events. If it is not possible for the city to help us in this regard, it would also mean so much to our parishioners. Also, in case it has not been mentioned, our church hosts huge regional events. About once every two months, there are a hundred plus people that show up, they go to the IGA to buy snacks, and parents go to the bars on Main Street. These events, which we'd like to do more of, bring a nice chunk of business to our little town, and we would hate to see the numbers decline, because they're either, they either couldn't find parking, or got a ticket because they didn't know they couldn't park on the street, it would be a loss for us and the town. Anyways, that's just my comment, I believe our church put in a formal request, but I just wanted to add my family's support to the topic, whatever the church asks for, we hope the city can help, thank you.
Alright, looks like we have some people on Zoom. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak, you can go ahead and unmute yourself at any time. Alright, here, now we'll move on to public comment, non-agenda items, I'm gonna do three minutes, please state your name for the record. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item?
My name is Marty Poyet, I live here in Winlock, up on Clark Avenue. And I wanted to take my three minutes to thank all of you guys. I know a lot of times you guys come up here with grievances or anything like that, and I've sat there before. And I wanna thank you who are leaving, for being able to make the hard decisions, for keeping Winlock in mind. I want to thank those of you who are staying, for willing to continue to do what's best for Winlock, and have those things and arrows. But I mostly came up here to thank Mayor Spinson. Brandon, when you took over, our city was in turmoil. And then just when you got the reins, we went into a worldwide pandemic. And somehow, Winlock stayed open. Somehow after the pandemic, we got more businesses than we did than before. Since you have been mayor, we have fixed multiple streets, our population has almost doubled. Our police force went from having to Toledo to have to help us, to us helping Toledo. You helped make and provide a new community development service here in the city that other cities use. It has grown exponentially, and the impact that you have washed over on our city has changed it forever. And I wanted to thank you.
Thank you Marty, I appreciate it.
Thank you Marty.
Thank you Marty for being a part of that as well. I appreciate every council member that's been here, everyone's always worked for the greater good. And I don't know if anybody's really noticed it, but one thing that hasn't happened in Winlock council meetings is a council and the mayor fighting, or the staff. That's something that you haven't seen for the last six years. And so I'm very thankful that everybody, regardless of political background, or any kind of standing within the community, anything like that, anything that would sometimes be divisive. I appreciate that everybody walks in this door and does what's best for the community, and that's really set this apart for the last handful of years, multiple councils. And so thank all of you, thank you, I appreciate it. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
My name is Dre Watson, sitting at the meeting here. I just wanna thank everybody here, all of you guys, remember, you know, James, Jeremy, everybody involved, right? Lindsay, Chuck, read the name, Jody, I know Jody, and Brandon, and specifically you as well, and you for going out. You have new, correctly if I'm wrong, but there was no manual coming in, right? You pretty much read by braille, figured the job out, you know, so I do appreciate that. And I think I might have talked with Victoria when she came in the house, picked up a couple of things, and, and there's really no reason to put the mouth on somebody coming in, right? I'd be negative without that, everybody deserved a chance, but the biggest part is working together and figuring that out, moving forward, but I'd like to speak for Lisa too, that we sure appreciate you Brandon, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you Dre.
Alright, anybody else that wishes to speak? Alright, if you are on Zoom and you wish to speak regarding a non-agenda item, you may unmute yourself and speak at any time. Alright, here now on, we will move on to the consent agenda. Approval of vouchers for December 22nd, 2025, in the amount of seventy-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. An approval of minutes from December 8th, 2025. Any questions regarding the vouchers or the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent, consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First up on the agenda, resolution 2025-18, yearly renewal of ILA with Lewis County for jail facility use. City of Winlock, Washington, resolution number 2025-18. A resolution of the city of Winlock, Washington, authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with Lewis County for jail facility use. We also use, this is for county, we also use the tribal facility, Shaleus. We did that earlier this year, so we entered into it earlier this year, so we wouldn't be renewing it at the end of the year. We are with the county, next year it'll be the same idea.
Just build their own jail and be done with this?
It is, it's my stuff, I was looking at that last time we went over this.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-18.
A second. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2025-18, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Alright, next on the agenda, resolution 2025-19. ILA with Lewis County Fire District 15 for fire inspection services. City of Winlock, Washington, resolution number 2025-19. A resolution of the city of Winlock, Washington, approving an interlocal agreement with Lewis County Fire District Number 15, authorizing the mayor to sign, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date. This is so that Lewis County District Number 15 would be able to do commercial fire inspections within the city limits of Winlock.
I thought it sounded like somebody started to make a comment.
Any questions regarding this resolution and/or ILA?
Standard. Uh, cuz I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-19.
A second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2025-19, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you Jess, we, resolution passes.
Figure out where the sound come from.
Good job.
I miss you, man, and I'm sick.
Alright, well we hear you loud and clear, thank you for joining us. Next on the agenda, resolution 2025-20. Yearly renewal of interlocal agreement, Winlock and Beta Site Sewer Inspection Services. This was one that was tabled from the last meeting, but needed separated. City of Winlock, Washington, resolution number 2025-21. A resolution of the city of Winlock, Washington, authorizing an interlocal agreement between the city of Beta and the city of Winlock for wastewater treatment plant testing and services. Authorizing the mayor to execute said interlocal agreement, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Yes, or where that there is a?
Not on this one.
There's a, there's an error, it says wait water, we're gonna go ahead and go.
That's the next one.
Oh, did I read the?
It's like, oh crap, I screwed it up again.
That's on 21.
Yeah, it was.
20's good.
Yeah, there's no separation, it was all in one thing, that's why I did turn to the next one, sorry guys. Alright, City of Winlock, Washington, resolution number 2025-20. A resolution of the city of Winlock, Washington, authorizing an interlocal agreement between the city of Beta and the city of Winlock for site sewer inspection services. Authorizing the mayor to execute said interlocal agreement, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Any questions regarding this resolution?
Thank you much, go ahead Drew.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2025-20. Yearly renewal of ILA between Winlock and Beta Sites Sewer Inspection Services.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2025-20, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Alright, let's see if I can do this one correctly. Resolution 2025-21, yearly renewal of interlocal agreement at Winlock and Beta Wastewater Treatment Plant Testing. City of Winlock, Washington, resolution number 2025-21. Resolution of the city of Winlock, Washington, authorizing an interlocal agreement between the city of Beta and the city of Winlock for wastewater treatment plant testing and services. Authorizing the mayor to execute said interlocal agreement, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
So this has a typo, and so I'll make a motion to approve as amended to correct the typo from wait water to wastewater.
A second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2025-21 as amended, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Next on the agenda, resolution 2025-22, city personnel policies. City of Winlock, Washington, resolution number 2025-22. A resolution of the city of Winlock, Washington, adopting an updated comprehensive personnel policy manual and associated procedures, and repealing and superseding conflicting ordinances, resolutions, and procedures. This is something that has been, been actually worked on for a while.
Since I started in April.
Right.
Well, and it actually, it got started way back when, like when Marty was even here, and something, I don't know, it got.
We changed clerks and there was plenty of things to get caught up on, and here we are.
And then some of this got brought up in, when we did our CBA, so this is just updating things and making policies correct, you know, so that we can do certain things, so do our tests that we need to do, and stuff like that, record tests and stuff like that, so. I'll make a motion to approve the city personnel policy as amended, cuz the attorneys added a whole bunch of legal stuff that's been coming down the pipeline.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2025-22. The city personnel policies as amended, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Alright, ordinance 1192, setting speed limits and modifying no parking towway zones. City of Winlock, Washington, ordinance number 1192, and ordinance of the city of Winlock, Washington, amending chapters 10.15 and 10.35 of the Winlock Municipal Code. Setting speed limits and modifying no parking towway zones, amending ordinance number 9201104 and 1157 as necessary, and providing for severability and establishing effective date. Among this is an update to SR 505, the forty mile an hour zone was changed right before Granite Prairie, where it used to be fifty, that modification is in here. You have the parking for Arden on Sunday is in here as well. And I believe we have cemetery road as well.
And the no parking zone in the fire lane at Myers Meadows.
Correct. I believe those were the four updates to this. Am I allowed to ask a question? Typically, no, but since everybody's being somewhat civil this evening, go ahead. What's the cemetery road about? Uh, was this keeping the, the speed posted lower?
Do we extend that, that forty miles an hour before Prairie, closer up or further back?
Uh, it's, it's longer, the forty mile an hour zone is longer now, it used to change to fifty right away, and Wash Dot finally did that once the turn lane went in. Once the.
Now it's close to the top of the hill, I think, or just right at the top.
The new signs are up and everything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've been requesting for years to lower the whole thing down to forty, which I'm sure.
Since the houses came in.
I'm sure everybody that drives through there, that doesn't live there, isn't gonna care for it, but every one of the residents that lives on five oh five has been requesting for years for that to get dropped down, and I don't disagree with them. It needs to happen, especially when you see semis going through there at fifty. Loaded dump trucks with rock, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be able to stop if you pull up in front of them, so. Um, as much traffic is going down five oh five now is necessary. However, uh, we've had quite the back and forth with Wash Dot. They're not going to lower the rest of the road down until the roundabouts go in, so this summer, maybe when they do a climbing lane and a roundabout gets put in. With any luck, uh, Wash Dot will see fit to bring the number to forty for the entirety all the way from the Grand Prairie area there and Capella to, uh, to I five.
So on the parking on Arden Street, since, Chief, since you're here, I want your input on this as well. And obviously legals, is it gonna be a pain to maybe put in there that you can park between like, let's say, five and nine during the week? So that way they have parking, you know, for their events during the week? Because I, I wanna put an end time because we have school during, you know, starting Monday, and the buses travel through there, so I can't have somebody park there overnight. You know, so, and then obviously we want them gone or not there during school time, so. I mean, five to nine or something like that, I mean, is that feasible to be able to do during the week?
And you know somebody that lives there is gonna see that and go, oh, I could just say I'm with the church and forget that they parked there or just use that as an excuse to park on the side.
I'm not sure I'm gonna understand the question. A certain section of the road, you do want no parking, or you want allowed parking from five AM to nine?
You know, five PM to like nine PM, like a short window for like church activities at night, you know, so that way come the morning time, all the traffic's gone for school and all my business, you know what I mean?
Maris is gonna be a little bit more familiar with this, but we just redid, um, Arden, um, down here. It's, it's what, about three blocks long? Um, and when we did that, we, TIB said, you can go ahead and do it this way and we'll pay for it. It used to be parking on both sides. Uh, when we redid it, they went to parking on one side, you have sidewalks on both sides. But what happened is, is the side, there's a church on the side where no parking's allowed, and they don't really have any parking there, so to speak of, in the first place. So what's occurred is, um, on Sundays and at times in the evening when they're having events, there's no parking in front of the church, and there's really no other great area in the vicinity to park a large amount of cars. So what they've asked is that we allow parking on Sunday, um, which is fair, but also if they're gonna have events randomly at night, um, they're looking to park there as well without having tickets. The, the problem that exists with it is that, of course, residents are going to start parking there.
Right. Well, and that's why I want a chief's input, because like, is this gonna be a complete nightmare to try to enforce? Which potentially could be, but I mean, if somebody's there parked at eleven o'clock at night, there's highly doubtful there's a church activity going on that late, so I mean.
Is it part of the grant that it be made, no parking?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, that's hurdle number one, I think. And then hurdle number two, um, maybe you could have a system of permission. Um, I mean, you can ask the city for permission to use that, and I'm sure the church would ask the city for permission to use that stretch of side road for, on a pretty regular basis, um, but that way it's not playing favorites to anybody either. So if they need it for, I mean, maybe it's, they can use it every Sunday, but if there's some kind of special event, um, maybe some type of permit system, but it doesn't have to be very involved, maybe just pretty very, very simple. But then again, if anybody else in the neighborhood would like to use that spot for some type of event as well, then they have equal access to it. But I don't think that you can just give it exclusively to the church. Fair. Uh, we do have a special. They have to look into the grant language. We do have a special event application. That, uh, application could be reworded, um, to include, uh, Arden Avenue for certain events. Does that something that makes, do you guys do events, uh, I guess infrequent enough to be that, for that to?
We meet every, uh, every Wednesday and Thursday, as far as evening goes.
Okay.
And that's the problem.
So that's the, the frequency, it's every week, that's mainly like the core of it, and then there's other things sometimes, but.
Right.
I think that's kind of why we still ask for.
Have you, uh, have you been having issues with your people parking on Arden on Wednesday and Thursday nights? Because I haven't noticed it, and I live right across the street from you.
Yeah, we, we park on the other side. We have a little parking lot that fits like four or five cars, and half of those are usually the big vans, big families. They've done, because, they do because we don't wanna get a ticket and break, you know, we're trying to abide. And so, you know, we're parking up this road and down that road, and so it's, it's doable, it's just, um.
Yeah.
It'd be great if we could have.
Just be there.
Yeah, because it is growing, the church, the, the amount of people are, is growing, so.
Good. There is, I, I understand there's a bit of a logistics, cuz it is a little far, especially if you have children, little children.
Yeah.
But there is a small parking lot behind Methodist Church that you are welcome to use. There's also parking in front of the church along the street in front of the sidewalk, you're welcome to use. It's about a block away.
Maris is more familiar with this, but, um, I, I'm kinda worried about the grant language, I mean, if it, but. The, the language needs to be reviewed. It might be, maybe it could be interpreted as no parking during peak times, you know, during the day or during school hours. But in the evening, it sounds like from five to nine, if there's not a lot of traffic in the neighborhood, then maybe that's something that's doable as well. But I think it needs to be looked at, and this might have to be amended down the road.
And the issue with that is also, if you have cars parked on both sides of the street, it's very narrow.
Well, I mean, it's fine for normal, but that's why I'm saying during peak times, so peak times would be, you know, during school times, basically, I mean. So, and so we.
Yeah, as soon as the school bus is trying to go down a red dump truck or something of that nature, that's when it's gonna get cozy.
But yeah, I definitely, let's relook at this. Um, this will hold for now, you know, until we can dig more into the language. And everything, at least this gets you guys taken care of for Sunday, digging down this path to make sure it's better for the rest of the week. And obviously, I'm, Chief knows about it, so I doubt he's gonna be targeted in you guys, so.
Yeah, when was the last time you were a parking ticket?
I don't think we've ever run a parking ticket.
That's not what I read in the newspaper.
Maybe, maybe I'm mistaken.
There's zero parking tickets.
Explain about my.
Has, has there been anybody that's got a ticket? No, I think we got a warning because. Yeah, there's a couple of favors that maybe don't like us or something.
Well, I mean, we're a hundred percent workers. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number one one nine two.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, a second.
You still redid it?
I, I was, I was just trying to double check, that's all. Uh, yeah.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number one one nine two. Is there any further comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Ordinance passes. All right, next on the agenda, ordinance number one one nine three, twenty twenty five budget amendment. City of Winlock, Washington, ordinance number one one nine three, an ordinance of the city of Winlock, Washington, amending the annual budget for the city of Winlock for the calendar year twenty twenty five, and directing the city plan to affect the budget amendments here and provided. Does anybody have any questions regarding this ordinance? I haven't had a chance to review.
No, there, um, no question.
I make a motion to approve ordinance eleven ninety-three, the budget amendment.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number one one nine three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance passes. All right, contact Contract Renewal Legal Services, Buzzard Law Group. This was updated for the reasons that were spoken to earlier. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Buzzard?
I was just gonna say, it's still too expensive.
Was that the only change, just the, just the, that amount, the fee amount?
'Tis the times, and it, I mean.
Yeah, it is.
We all hate it, but I mean, it's part of growing and part of just the world gets expensive, like, everything's going up. I'll make a motion to approve the legal cer- renewal of the legal services of Buzzard Law Group.
I have a motion and a second to approve the renewal of the legal services to Buzzard Law Group. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, Contract Renewal Engineering Services, Jackson Civil. Don't know if Devon is.
I think so.
I don't, I don't think he's on here. I don't see him.
I sent him in, I, well. No, he's not.
Does anybody have any questions regarding his, um, contract?
It's all the same. I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the engineering service of Jackson Civil.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the contract remo- renewal with Jackson Civil for engineering services. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda, Executive Session, RCW four two point three zero point one one zero, potential litigation. I think we should meet about fifteen minutes, but stick around. Uh, we'll be back, and then I have a few people to swear in. So if you'd stick around, we would appreciate it. I'm gonna recess the meeting, go on to executive session. All right, we are back from executive session under RCW four two point three zero point one one zero. Uh, potential litigation, no decisions were made. All right, before we adjourn, um, we have a few people that are warrants sworn in, correct? Alicia?
I think it's me.
Just you?
I'm gonna take that as a call up.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna.
I'm making sure that I get the right one, Karen.
That's my brother.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Alicia Hornberg.
Do you solemnly swear to affirm?
Do you solemnly swear to affirm?
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Washington?
And the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially perform?
And impartially perform.
And discharge the duties?
And discharge the duties.
Of the office of?
Of the office of.
City of Winlock, Council Position Five?
City of Winlock, Council Position Five?
A four-year term.
A four-year term.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you. Can I use your?
Victoria, are you here? Would you like to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just scoot through here.
Oh, we're gonna do this? Okay, okay, all right.
Unless you want to.
That's fine, I'll do it.
I, state your name.
I, Victoria Merrison.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Washington?
And the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties?
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the office of?
Of the office of.
City of Winlock Mayor?
City.
Sorry, City of Winlock Mayor, four-year term.
City of Winlock Mayor, four-year term.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Do you want me to sign this one too, Ben? Okay.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Make your adjourn.